I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, commencing at 7:03 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Anderson. Online, we have Councilmembers Salahu Dean and Councilmember Fields. I believe that Councilmember Nueva Camino will not be joining us tonight. And we have myself, Council President Kritzer. There are four items on the agenda tonight. The Environmental Sustainability Action Plan 2025 Refresh Strategy Review, the Capital Facilities Plan 2050 General Government Update, and then also the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement. And finally, Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the ESAP 2025 Refresh, also known as the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Strategy Review. And introducing this item is our Sustainability Program Manager Jenny Liebeck. Go ahead, Ms. Liebeck.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for having us here this evening. So with me tonight are my colleagues, Micah Bonkowski, Sustainability Program Administrator, and then also our colleagues Valeria Cosgrove and Erin O'Meara. They're our Sustainability Coordinators and recent Climate Corps and AmeriCorps Fellows. So our objectives this evening are to get your feedback on the draft strategies and actions that will guide our climate work over the next five years. So we'll review our timeline and the outcomes that we're looking to achieve through this update, touch on what's shifting between the 2020 and 2025 plan, and then we'll review the proposed strategies and actions, closing out with next steps, and then opening it up to discussion. So just to start us off, so we are at a critical phase of the plan update with draft strategies and actions that are now out for public comment. And again, these will be our climate and sustainability priorities for the next five years and keep us on track towards our 2030 and 2050 greenhouse gas reduction goals. The strategies were developed based on a robust climate analysis and months of community and staff engagement, which are still ongoing. And that community engagement work and feedback was summarized in Attachment C of your meeting materials, so I would encourage you to review those so that because we just we will not have enough time this evening to go through all that in detail. But there's a lot of great, great info there. But looking forward, so we are on track to release a draft plan next month with target adoption in December. And then at the end of this process, we are working to develop a community-wide plan that will give us a clear five-year strategy to cut emissions and build resilience to climate impacts while also uplifting vulnerable communities and empowering Redmond community members to act on climate right alongside, right alongside us. And so we are really fortunate that we are not starting this work from scratch with this update, but rather we are building on the foundation that was laid with the 2020 ESAP and also more than a decade of intentional climate action that's been led by various staff members across the city. So we've learned a lot and we've accomplished a lot in this time, and the 2025 plan reflects that growth and strives to bring a new level of focus to our climate work. So some of the key differences between the 2020 ESAP and the changes that we're proposing in 2025 include, first and foremost, a focused scope. So we're still touching on the same topics, you know, trees, streams, energy efficiency, but the strategies and actions in the 2025 plan are really focused on the outcomes that are going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and enhance climate resilience, rather than looking more broadly at sustainability as a whole. We're also trying to make it a bit more manageable by focusing on actions to implement over the next five years. We're going to still keep a long-term look towards our 2050 goals, but again, really focusing on the next five years, knowing that we will be updating this plan every five years. And this more focused scope and timeframe means that we will have fewer actions and strategies, which we hope will increase our effectiveness and maximize our resources. For council's climate emergency declaration, as you may recall, that was added to the 2020 ESAP after the plan was effectively adopted. And so through this 2025 refresh, we have integrated actions into the plan that are driving progress towards the declaration. And you'll specifically see those called out in the city action section within each of the big moves. And then finally, we're proposing that equity is not a standalone action as it was in the 2020 plan, but that it's a foundational value that guides how we implement each action within our 2025 plan. And so as a reminder, the updated plan is organized around five big moves to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase climate resilience, and then 10 strategies to guide our progress within those big moves. And so what we're going to do is walk through each of the big moves and review the proposed strategies. And Attachment A in your meeting materials includes that full list of proposed actions, so you can follow along, again, in a little bit more detail there if you'd like. And so as we walk through these, I just encourage you to be thinking about any gaps or questions that we need to make sure that we're addressing as we take comment and enhance these strategies and actions. I'm going to pass it on to Micah for the first big move.
Hello. So the first two big moves, we combined into one slide because they both revolve around buildings. So make existing buildings better and build resilient and efficient buildings. And the greenhouse gas inventory that we've done at the city shows that about 70% of our emissions come from buildings direct, either direct fuel use or the electricity use in those buildings. So Redmond 2050 update provided a great framework for increasing the efficiency of new buildings through some of the new mandatory green building standards and then also the state's green building standards. So for this five-year period, our goal for existing buildings is to kind of scale some of the actions that we completed during the first five years of this plan, provide technical assistance and incentives and resources to help make those existing buildings more efficient. Energy Smart Eastside has done a lot of great work installing heat pumps in homes that had gas or resistance heat to improve their greenhouse gas footprint and improve the efficiency of those homes. And we want to scale that up and continue that program. The clean building performance standards that have been passed by the state, we want to provide technical assistance to building owners in the city to meet their benchmarking goals and requirements under that state law. We want to expand and continue our green building program. And then we want to work with Puget Sound Energy on grid resilience and help leverage some funds from Puget Sound Energy and Commerce for the city buildings to help with that grid resilience.
So big move three then is all about transportation. And as you can see in the pie chart, the gas and diesel that we use in our vehicles is the second largest source of emissions in Redmond. And so our strategy for this big move is first to get folks onto our trails and walking paths and onto the public transportation system. And so the work through the Transportation Master Plan and Redmond 2050 are immensely beneficial and really give the city an edge that will result in systemic and long-term emission reductions and vehicle miles traveled. And so again, I cannot understate the impact and the benefit of some of the land use decisions that were made through Redmond 2050. And we also know that cars will still be a part of our transportation and system in the future, and so our subsequent strategy is to support the electrification of the vehicles that will remain on the road, so we can have zero emission vehicles in Redmond. And so to achieve the vision for this big move, we're proposing to expand EV infrastructure with a focus on multifamily, improve non-vehicle transportation access and connectivity, and implement parking management in alignment with the Transportation Master Plan.
And big move four, achieve zero waste of resources. At 7% waste isn't the biggest greenhouse gas emitter in our inventory, but the waste that we send to the landfill does create greenhouse gases such as methane. So continued expansion of composting and recycling opportunities is one piece of the puzzle. In addition, the emissions associated with producing what we consume can be higher than those of the materials we dispose. So we kind of want to work through Public Works and the New Erycology Contract to continue providing education on how to properly recycle and compost and work to support circular economy of repurpose, reuse, reduce, or reduce, and then also support the state in implementing the Extended Producer Responsibility Programs for packaging and paper products. We'd like to incentivize durables at local eateries through pilot programming. And then continue to evaluate our CND policy and see if we need to add mandatory diversion targets for those CND programs. And then also continue to work on a sustainable purchasing policy for the city to support those businesses in making a more circular economy.
And then our last big move is all about fostering a resilient community and environment. And there's a lot that we that goes into this big move, and so we've split it into two. But overall, we know that we're seeing climate hazards like extreme heat, wildfire smoke events, including today, and flooding, they're all becoming more frequent and intense here in Redmond. And so again, focused here on how we can create a more resilient community environment and environment. So on the community side, we heard a lot from the community on the need for more tools to be able to access information and partnerships to be able to support that information flow. And so the proposed actions in the 2025 plan focus on expanding communication channels and strengthening those partnerships with community organizations so that we can really reach people more effectively and ultimately build our community's capacity to respond to extreme events.
And then, well, the increase in climate hazards is impacting our community residents. We also need to increase the resilience of our natural systems to be ready for some of these changes that are coming. As precipitation patterns change, we need to update our floodplain maps to highlight areas where infrastructure needs to adapt. We need to be wary of water conservation and protection of our drinking water resources. Goals are being set for tree canopy protection and expansion, which increases shade and resilience to heat while also sequestering carbon. And then we need to develop a community wildfire protection plan to protect Redmond residents on the urban wildland interface from wildfire risk and air quality issues from regional fires. And these actions will all benefit our natural environment and all of its inhabitants, including us.
So that's just again, that high-level review of the five big moves and the subsequent strategies. But before we move to the discussion, we did just want to touch on some next steps. So again, today, actions and strategies is the primary focus of our conversation. We will be keeping an issues matrix of the questions and discussions for today so that we can really track and properly address your feedback. And then we will be integrating feedback that we heard from council and the community into the strategies and actions, and then publishing a draft plan next month. And then we are proposing to review that draft plan with council in an optional study session on October 28th. And so that draft plan will have, you know, metrics for the big moves, the details on implementation, data behind all of this work, and community opportunities for action. And then we are still, we're proposing that a draft plan or a final draft plan be presented to council for adoption on December 2nd. And so we did want to open it up to discussion, and again, the area would really appreciate your feedback as, you know, on any gaps in terms of our approach on equity, greenhouse gas reductions or resilience. So again, we can really ensure we have the right actions going into the publication of the draft, draft plan next month.
Thank you so much. We'll go to questions from the council. I see Councilmember Fields will lead us off online.
Thank you. As I said last time you're here, I really am excited and applaud the work that you've done. One of the questions that came up at a recent event, one Redmond, and I've heard in other spaces is, you know, how do we balance the need for sustainability and addressing climate change with the economic counters to that? And as I go through this again with you, I realize that we are acknowledging the impacts of climate change. Is there anywhere on the horizon where we can begin to quantify that so that when we do have those discussions and we do that outreach and we do try to show our community and our business community that there is a cost to wildfires, there is a cost to extreme weather, there's a cost to droughts or flooding? And I know that that's a difficult thing, but is there any thoughts on the horizon that we would find or get some help to quantify what it would cost us, the city of Redmond?
And just a clarifying question, you're referring to impacts of climate change in the event of inaction or just what we anticipate, the cost of future climate impacts?
Yeah, no, not for inaction. The costs, so that people can begin to understand that there are potential costs that will be much greater than the cost of trying to prepare or mitigate or avoid those events. And I don't think that that's a major part of our discussion right now when we do this cost-benefit analysis.
Absolutely. We can add that to the issues matrix. And so we are looking at some cost analyses, and I think that there's some potential regional data that we might be able to pull from as well to address that. But we can add that to the issues matrix and provide a more detailed response in that form.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this forward and to all the community members who've been really involved so far in this process. This is really exciting and to see the potential for it to come in. We said we were going to get it done this year and to have it, you know, December 2nd, I hope we can stay on that timeline. The community, as you said, is giving feedback right now, and they have copied the council in a few comments. I've also had a visit from a resident who had this question. So I just wanted to acknowledge that water in and of itself is not one of the largest priorities. This is kind of coming up again in community. Water is not one of the big five, particularly water supply is the question kind of coming from community. I will say, in the very short term, I was thrilled to see the resilience hub idea for emergency management integrated into the big five because I also saw it reflected in the fire functional plan. And that speaks to me that there's like a ton of coordination happening here at the city, and I'm really proud of that. But I do wonder if you could speak for a moment about water supply, and then I do have one follow-up question.
Turned off my microphone. So in terms of the water resilience perspective, you'll notice that there were two actions that are being proposed in this space. One is a comprehensive strategy, water resilience strategy, really to help us get our arms around this, and then also the AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, which will provide us with the data for kind of water usage within our community and help us better kind of better understand leak detection or identify leak detection opportunities and things like that. So all that to say is our priority for the next five years is really about getting our, again, our arms around the data and then identifying a unified path forward for how we do make sure our water infrastructure is really is resilient and understanding the gaps and things like that. So that's what that, it's a, they're two small, seemingly small strategies with very, very big impact, and they're not small at all, right? They're significant capital costs, for instance, for the AMI. But so that is the way that we are looking to address that in the five years, knowing that this will lead to more efforts longer term to ensure we have a resilient water supply.
Great. And so as a council member, I would be happy to take a vote to help fund that supply study and so we can have that planned or to fund the plan to do that. There is an existing water supply plan that the council just approved in the fall, and there was a very small recommendation in there that I have just not forgotten about, which is the plan, our existing water systems plan actually recommends that the council take action on faucet efficiency and to offer some legislation in the city. So perhaps we can talk about how that could be part of a hastened action related to this specific action or big move as it is. Anyway, thank you for addressing that, and it's been one of the common ones from community. Appreciate it.
Mayor Bernie?
Thank you. And I just want to, you know, reiterate that I appreciate that Jenny and team have worked with everyone throughout the city, and a lot of the questions that Councilmember Stewart was raising does, is also in our sustainability work, but also is in our utility work with the water team as well as Cascade Water Reliance. And so perhaps we can maybe add some addendum about how we work with other parts of the city and agencies that do some of this other work that still goes to the benefit of the whole community in the world of sustainability. As a reminder, there's probably some other things like that, too, but I think that would be a good addition.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much. I just wanted a couple of comments. One, I really appreciated the simplification of the number of actions. I think that will be a much easier to handle plan as you go forward, so good work with that. And then I also, I just wanted to ask what the mayor has to think about this, and we don't really hear from you on it till later, so we'd love to hear from you now on the proposal so far.
Oh, yeah, I'm really excited about it. I agree with you, it completely streamlines the approach. It gives us some focus, and I think it relies on the work that we have done over the last few years and thinking different, a little bit differently about where we go now. It gives the staff focus on what they should be working on, what's the highest priority, and also gives the community a good handle on what they can do that will have the most impact as well. So I think it encompasses a lot of those really great pieces in moving us forward.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Thanks for all the hard work on this. It's really helpful to have it in such clear and concise terms. Really, really appreciate that. Very interested in the conversations that we'll have around the diversion tactics for construction and debris. Interested to know how it's been going to date, if we could get an update on that. Also, love seeing the durables pilot program in there. I know we batted that around back in early pandemic times, and we maybe couldn't do as much as we had wanted to at the time, so really excited to see that back in here or in here highlighted. And then I just, around the electrification component, I know that there's RCW that expires January 1st of 2026 that prevents homeowners associations from having, like say, a multifamily residential from installing. I'm hopeful that we can either lobby and maybe add this to our legislative agenda to extend that, since I don't think electrification has, it's taken off quickly here, but I don't know that it's been adopted as quickly as most people anticipated for home charging stations. So I'm wondering if there's anything that we as a city can do to help ensure that homeowners associations don't become a blockade for people trying to adopt and trying to install charging in their, in their homes. So that's RCW 6438062, just for reference. And then from my council member knowledge, the water conversation that we had several months ago will be coming back to us in mid-October. So we will have one action that we'll be looking at for water management and water rights and securing and protecting our water aquifer.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Earlier in the presentation, you had a comment about the emissions from construction and demolition waste being less than what was expected. Is that correct?
No, we haven't, we haven't presented any data yet on the CND ordinance and the diversion. What I said was, I think that sometimes the things that we buy, which isn't measured in our greenhouse gas inventory, have higher emissions than the disposal of those things.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll actually follow up on some of the comments right before. And I did want to clarify on the durable and reusable dishware effort with local food establishments. I think at the time when we started to look into that and prioritizing it a little bit earlier in the work, we were also talking about compostable standards for takeout. Is that covered through some of the Extended Producer Responsibility implementation? Can you clarify that, or does that need to be specified in 4.2?
That's a great question. I think the, there were two laws passed in the last session that covered compostable products. One was the EPR bill, and then the other is the Organics Management Law, and those are still in rulemaking, so I don't know exactly how those will pan out in terms of requirements from the state. I think durables, since we talked about it last, have come a really long way. The Reuse Seattle program is a really good example of something that we could look into that's incentive-based. They provide money for restaurants to buy the durables to start up with, and then education and outreach. They've also gone big into event durables and reusables. If you go to CenturyLink Field or if you go to other places, they have reusable containers now with take-back systems. Those companies weren't here when we talked about it last time. Now they're in Seattle, and we're within their market area, so those kinds of things, like we do at Derby Days with the Beer Garden with the reusable cups. That's all kind of becoming more possible because of all the work done in Seattle, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we are capturing both, because I think the durable and reusable piece within establishments, as well as when we do things like our events, which I know we've modernized on, but also the takeout is still a significant amount that goes out of businesses, so kind of thinking about that piece of it. And then thinking about ensuring that everyone has access and is able to compost, whether they're in a multifamily building or in their own individual homes, which I think is a drum that I and my colleagues, especially Council Vice President Forsyth, have been beating ongoing of just making sure that really we can get to that 100%, where everyone has that access to easily compost, I think is, should be a key part of this vision. I have one other comment, but I will go second round in case others have questions or comments. Councilmember Fields.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I was.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hit the button, but it didn't unmute. In the presentation, I talk about e-bikes subsidies, and I had a chance to talk to Michael Hints back in April on this. And there are, there is some interest in the community. I know the state had a program. Will you be sort of the leading hip of the spear on this, or is that the Planning Department or Transportation as we move on and get more details about schedule and how much and the criteria? Do you have any more details on it that you can share tonight?
So we have applied for a grant through Puget Sound Energy with Bellevue and Issaquah as co-applicants. Bellevue took the lead on it, and we interviewed last week, and we will hope to hear by the end of the year on that grant for a bike rebate program similar to the state program.
Do you know the amount, or is there any other plans for city funding on that?
I'd have to check with the Planning Department. I think they had plans in the future as part of their transportation demand management program.
And we can add that to the issues matrix as well and provide you with a more detailed response.
Thanks, Jenny. I would appreciate that tracking on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. One last question from me. Again, we wanted to have this ESAP refresh done this year, which it looks like we're on track to do. And then the ESAP is so directly related to our net zero emissions targets, specifically with net zero for the city operations by 2030. Given where we are with this version of the ESAP refresh that's in front of us, and knowing that we would only have two budget cycles before that 2030 deadline, do you believe that the version that is in front of us gets us to the 2030 or keeps us on track toward that 2030 might be a more fair way to ask tonight?
To clarify, are you referring to the 50% reduction by 2030?
Then, yeah, the net zero.
Net zero, so the council's.
For city operations.
So, so no. And so one thing is, we had noted this in the matrix that we had, I think it was Attachment, apologies for not having that noted, I think it was Attachment C of the, the meeting materials. We'd included a matrix that showed, or a crosswalk, rather, that showed the 2020 actions, and also included at the very bottom of that was the Council Climate Emergency Declaration objectives with a brief status update for all of those. So I'd say that we are making as much progress as we can towards those, but the net zero for six. for city operations is unlikely, just because of all of the capital investments that would need to be made, for instance, to decarbonize our city facilities. And so we are doing, I'd say, everything that we can, but to get us specifically to that net zero by 2030 is unlikely.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question that I did ask. So I appreciate that, and I will take a closer look at that piece of the document.
Thank you. Not seeing other questions, I'll make a comment and then ask one quick other question. So I'm really, I'm glad on the fifth, on the fifth big move to be able to see some of the work that we're going to do around our natural systems and making sure that we are kind of addressing some of the important ecological concerns. One of the things that I don't see in here as we talk about some of, as we kind of talk about what we're targeting, given our city's commitment to salmon recovery and to having healthy wildlife as well in addition to, as part of kind of a healthy ecosystem, is that call out in terms of, you know, wanting to have healthy lands, healthy people, healthy wildlife, and really that kind of interconnected vision. We have quite a couple of actions that pertain to that around stormwater and around restoration and community resilience, but especially given that we're going to be doing this very significant project with the Evans Creek relocation project and some of our other investments, I think it would make sense to call it out, although it may be that it's already in progress, and that's why it's not showing up as our future big move. But I do feel like it's one that we're going to have to continue to invest in, and I think as a big regional partner and leader on this, I think it would be great to have that a little bit more called out. One question that I have, and maybe it's a little bit connected to the question that Councilmember Stewart was just asking, in terms of past strategies, because we had our zero carbon strategy and we had the 30-year ESAP, and now we're moving to this five-year set of big moves update. How are we going to report out on the 78 ongoing and completed actions and also those ones that were in the 2030-plus in terms of making sure that we don't lose the 30-year vision, even though I love this condensed five-year? What are we going to get done now? Because now is the moment to act.
Yeah, to your question on, so the intent is that when we adopt the plan, we'll have an appendix with the 2030-plus actions included. So we will always, every five years when we're updating the plan, we're looking at the actions now, are they still relevant, just like we did with the 2020 plan? And then we're looking at those 2030-plus actions. What do we need to be pulling forward and implementing now? So there will always be that long list. Again, what we're trying to do is just provide a little bit more focus, and honestly, feedback that we heard from the community about our current plan is, it was just, there was so much in it, right? And so that's really what we're trying to do, is provide that focus. So again, those long-term actions will still be included as an appendix. They're not going away, but our focus will be on those five-year actions. And there was one other piece to your question that I'm not answering.
Oh, how are we going to report on the things that...
Oh, yes. I think one of the things we're really trying to do is keep an ongoing narrative about the action, the work that we're doing as a city, and so not just saving it for like an annual report or something like that, but the ongoing, you know, stream restoration work or the amazing work that our Parks team is doing with how they maintain our parks. So there's kind of a piece of ongoing narrative to share the things that we're doing, to normalize, like this is how we do this work in Redmond, and this is part of how we do this work, but then also maintaining, so the plan will include metrics that will track progress towards these actions. So there will be that element, too. So it's kind of a both-and and everything, right? We just need to keep telling the story. Our annual report for our sustainability work will be focused on these actions and our metrics here. And again, this is where we just have so much great work that's happening. It's very hard to communicate it all, and that's what we're really trying to figure out, is how do we, how do we do that in a way that we don't just totally bog people down with information? So we're certainly open to ideas if you have other ways. We're trying to get as creative as possible. Valerian and Erin are working on a lot of that work on behalf of our team, so we are open to ideas if you have any feedback.
Wonderful. Well, it's a great story to tell. We have been doing so much, so I just want to commend you both and all of our amazing teams. I'm sitting out here in the audience, probably listening online, and for all this great work and excited for what's ahead. I don't see other questions from the council, so I think I'll say thank you. Do you want to remind us of any, what's the next touch on this?
Yeah, next touch, we have an optional study session on October 28th. So assuming that council would like that, we'll be back here to review the draft plan.
Great. Not seeing any objections, so we'll see you back here then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Capital Facilities Plan 2050: General Government. We have Lorene Hamilton, our Parks and Recreation Director, here to introduce this item, and I believe we have a couple other folks coming up, so we'll give them a moment to get settled.
I'm Lorene Hamilton, Parks and Recreation Director. We are here this evening with the Capital Facilities Plan 2050: General Government. I'm joined this evening by Cameron Zapata, our Park Senior Planner. Glenn Coyle is online. He is our Long Range Senior Planner. Quinn Hunehausen, our Facilities Manager, and Scott Bonjukian from Makers. He has been our Project Manager on this project. And so we are here tonight to give you an update and walk through what the next steps are for this plan. As the title states, it takes our capital facilities planning out to 2050. So I am going to hand it off to my team, and we are just looking forward to sharing with you this evening the great cross-departmental work that has happened throughout the city on this project.
Thanks, Lorene. All right, so yeah, we're here to talk about the Capital Facilities Plan 2050: General Government. The purpose and the goals of this project include updating our 2025 to 2030 Capital Facilities Plan, which was adopted as part of Redmond 2050. This plan will forecast out the future needs of capital facilities to 2050 based on Redmond 2050 growth targets. It will identify potential locations and expansions of facilities, and it provides an analysis of how the city will finance capital facilities projects within its funding capacity and identifies those funding sources. And lastly, it updates the facilities' conditions and department needs from the 2019 Capital Facilities Plan. So there are many benefits to updating the Capital Facilities Plan, and this includes keeping facilities open and functional, which is critical to providing services and amenities. It maintains our emergency preparedness and resiliency. It maintains and improves services to underserved communities and geographies. It improves environmental sustainability, and it increases visibility and accessibility to visitors and staff. So I wanted to refresh your memory on some city context. Redmond 2050 identifies three growth centers, which includes downtown Overlake and Marymore Village, and these areas are intended for higher density, which means higher competition for land. Overlake in particular has been identified as a gap area, where we know the area will be accepting higher density, but currently lacks police and indoor recreation facilities. It's also not ideally served by fire. So to remedy this, recommendations include relocating Fire Station 12, adding a police precinct, a community center, and a new administrative office in Overlake. Since space is tight in Overlake, mixed-use, flexible spaces, and co-location of these facilities is highly encouraged. Thank you.
Can you move your mic a little? Thank you. Is better?
All right, next slide. The CFP has an interesting relationship to other functional plans. So this graphic here shows how many functional plans we have, which includes parks, fire, public safety, transportation, and utilities. And the CFP serves as that same role but for city facilities. It does get a little confusing because we do have the park plan, the fire functional plan, and public safety plan, which include general government facility buildings that are then included in this CFP. And this is because our facilities team maintains these spaces, and the facilities team is within our Parks Department and is also budgeted through the Parks Department. The CFP includes facilities that are occupied by staff, or city staff, and includes building which support fire, police, maintenance and operations, indoor recreation, and administration. And this does not include Fire District 34, utilities, ancillary park buildings, or non-city occupied buildings. And I also want to note that there are separate processes underway for the MOC and the Old Firehouse Team Center. And so this is a high-level overview of the process and the collaborative efforts for this project. We've been working alongside our consultants, Makers. It's also been a cross-departmental collaboration with our subject matter experts from fire, police, public works, park ops, Parks and Rec, finance, planning, and environmental sustainability. And the process includes assessing the existing conditions by doing site tours, staff interviews, a review of existing plans and studies, hosting a visioning workshop. Alternatives were provided based on their findings and analysis, and then recommendations were made and included in part of this CFP. So key findings, these are based on information from existing documents like our 2023 Capital Facilities Conditions Assessment, Redmond 2050, the Fire Functional Plan, as well as our site tours and interviews. These high-level findings are gathered, and it was determined that facilities are reasonably in good condition, except for a few fire stations. Multiple buildings with, will reach the end of their service life before 2050. There are some underserved areas, particularly in the Overlake area. Environmental improvements like from electrification can improve our environmental performance, and then emergency preparedness needs can be met by adequate maintenance funding along with other measures. So this plan shows the importance of maintenance, and that proactive maintenance handles small issues before they spiral into larger problems. Proper maintenance can extend the service life of facilities and prolong the time between major reinvestment, which can save public dollars. Most efficiencies and renewals will be addressed by funding routine maintenance and/or major So the projects are listed out in the capital investment strategy and prioritized into four separate buckets. So we have near term, which includes projects that are currently underway, and in the future 2027 to 2032 CIP. And then we have midterm. These are facilities that were identified as most crucial based on qualitative facilities rankings, like conditions, service gaps, and community needs. Then we have long term. These aren't urgent today, but essential for supporting the long-term population growth and service demands to 2050. And then lastly, we have the beyond 2050 bucket. And lastly, I want to point out that the continued funding of routine maintenance, again, is essential to keeping our facilities up and running, and you'll see that throughout the project lists. This next slide gives an overview of the major projects to come in the next 25 years for each functional area. The extensive project list can be found in the Capital Facilities Plan, starting on page 85. So these are just some of the major ones. So fire for the near term, we have the remodel of Fire Station 11, and this includes the Apparatus Bay Extension, renovation and replacement study, and then the implementation of that study, and then tenant improvements for the leased warehouse. In the medium-term projects, we have land acquisition and a new station for Station 12, and lifecycle renovations for Station 16. And lastly, we have beyond 2050 and relocating stations 11 and 19, fire stations 11 and 19, to better serve our downtown. Next is police. So in 2027 to 2050, we have middle-term or medium-term projects, and we have replacement of the public safety building and land acquisition for an Overlake precinct. Long-term, we then have the construction of the new Overlake precinct. And then for maintenance and operations, indoor recreation and administration, some of the near-term projects include addressing the old Firehouse Team Center, completion of the MOC, a reinvestment study for the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village. And the medium-term includes a replacement study for the pool, lifecycle renovations here at City Hall. And lastly, long-term includes a new community center in Overlake. And here's a high-level summary cost graph of the projects. They're color-coded by functional areas, and you can see through the different timeframes, a bulk of the spending isn't focused on just one functional area, it's spread throughout the different functional areas. And then here you can see the revenue sources based on timeframes. The Capital Facilities Plan, it doesn't commit specific funding sources, and these sources are assumed based on current and projected funding sources. Paying with cash generally is not feasible for most cities, so common methods for securing funding include council manic, voter-approved, and revenue bonds, as well as impact fees. And specific funding strategies, they'll be determined during the budgeting process for those specific projects. The next steps for this project includes hosting a public hearing at the October 8th Planning Commission meeting, and then seeking final adoption by the end of this year. And then in 2026, staff will begin the process to update the CIP for 2027 to 2032, which this document will help inform. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the great presentation and great work on this. Questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Cameron, your last slide, second to last slide, excuse me, with the three pie charts. In our current version of the draft plan, there's actually a placeholder on page 25 that says, "Finance will add the text here later." And actually, that is where the heart of most of my questions lie. As I reviewed this plan this week on the heels of the Fire Functional Plan, which the council looked at last week, I saw a ton of alignment, which is awesome. And I really don't have any additional questions about, I have so much confidence in the plan as it's set out. I have questions, of course, about that Overlake property that was mentioned and our willingness to even mention it in a plan of this size, knowing that it's one parcel of a few that could be there. But for the bulk of my questions moving forward, I'd like us to spend more time and have that financial narrative and be able to understand these pie charts quite a bit better before we go on a path toward adoption, because that's where the bulk of my questions lie. Thank you.
Can I address the Overlake? I'm sorry, that was loud. Can I address the Overlake piece? So yes, throughout the plan, it identifies that there are those three items that really do need to happen in Overlake, and so there are ongoing conversations, there are certain parcels that have been conversed. We want to capture it in this plan, though I agree it feels ambitious and uncertain. This plan is just that, it's a plan, and it's going to help guide us. And so with those being included and identifying the fact that in Overlake, we're going to have to be creative, we're going to have to use one space for multiple functions for the city, we want to make sure that we lay that out here and plan accordingly, so if that opportunity does present itself and when, we're ready to move on it effectively.
I'll throw one out here, following up on the Overlake thread. So I think, thinking about some of the potential uses, I know we have talked about as part of the upcoming Bellwether project, having the community service center that would be within that area. So I guess as we are thinking about, you know, future uses, and I remember hearing also about some discussions between Microsoft and Police of kind of these shared space opportunities and maybe not so many standalone structures. Can you speak to that and how that kind of fits in our thinking around the planning?
Yeah, there's been multiple conversations between fire, police entities in Overlake, and the conversation really is, we will... and the conversation really is, we will hopefully be able to acquire a property and then identify the city uses that need to be on that property. Right now, the three things that are really identified as needs in that neighborhood are a community center space, which is in line with our community center's recommendation from 2018, a police precinct, and the movement of Fire Station 12 to be closer to that down to the overlake urban center. And so there are opportunities, there have been conversations, but they haven't finalized into anything yet. And so the real goal is to identify that all three of those spaces are needed, but the understanding is that they will likely be a multi-use property that will have co-located city services on that site. Will they stack on each other? Will they be next to each other? We don't know any of those pieces yet because we don't have the property in our hands yet. So as those opportunities come up, those will, of course, come forward to city council for consideration as we begin to plan for those in the future. But those are the three functions that are really needed in the overlake center when we're able, soon.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And for the listening public, the discussion of this parcel and those needs is on page 50 of the plan. This parcel that's mentioned, this 1.6 acres, the former property owner has right of first refusal. When does that expire? Do we know? If we could find out.
That's not something we know. We can get that information for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm still not seeing other questions. I'll ask one more and then we can wrap up if there are no others. But in, one of the things that's also mentioned within here is the future update on our pool, which it feels like we just finished renovating. But I do know, when I first got on the council, we were also discussing this idea around regional facilities. And I think about that also in the context of the overlake conversation of things that we might do collectively with Bellevue or with Kirkland on some of these areas. And I'm curious if we can check in on that conversation as well and how that fits into the vision.
Yes, I can share a little bit about that. So it's identified in the Capital Facilities Plan because the east side is in need of pool space. Our pool had a major renovation, is in far better condition than it was previously, and yet its size does not really accommodate the growth of Redmond. As for, and so it's just identified, this is going to be a future need at some point that needs to be figured out. As for the regional efforts, I meet with all of the east side parks directors on a quarterly basis. Bellevue is in the process of building a new aquatic center, I believe in South Bellevue. Kirkland attempted to get something on their ballot, it did not pass. And so, and then, so a lot of those regional conversations really fell apart because as folks have been trying to get those projects funded and through the public, they're just not gaining the funding that they need. So I can continue having those conversations with King County and with Kirkland, but that has been something that has been really difficult to gain traction with on the east side. We acknowledge that everyone wants aquatics facilities, but not everyone wants to pay for aquatics facilities. Looks like the mayor has something to say.
You go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I think you answered that quite well. I think looking at this document is the things within our control, always thinking about what are other opportunities that we could have that could supplement whatever our facility needs are in the future. So I think another great example is not thinking of a single-use building but as a use, co-locating fire and police and perhaps community space. Much better use of the taxpayer dollars, much more efficient, and we can look at, you know, models like, say, the Together Center where they co-locate uses and housing and, you know, whatever that looks like. But the costs can be mitigated because you're putting multiple uses in there. So those are things we'll continue to look at. We'll continue to have those regional conversations about, you know, whatever it is we need or that we think our broader community needs, but we also want to make sure that we're looking at what are under the city of Redmond's control in order to plan for the future. And also have the same reaction as you with the pool renovation, like, didn't we just finish that? Why aren't we thinking about that? But those are things we'll continue to keep on the horizon, continue to engage in, but we just want to make sure that we're covering our bases for a city into the future.
Great. Council Vice President Forsete.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that question because I had written down pool replacement study but didn't quite know how to frame it. So that was perfect, and thank you for the conversation because a lot of the similar feels that I was having right now about, we just went through that process, and I've not been on council that long, that helped address. And I do think the regional plan, if we can continue that conversation, it is a huge disappointment that that Kirkland opportunity did not succeed, but I do think there's an opportunity if we were to have some sort of regional approach to it. So I appreciate that conversation. And I just wanted to second, Councilmember Stewart's ask for more clarity around the financial aspects when we continue the conversation. I think that's a lot of where my questions currently lie as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, thanks. So with some of the lessons hopefully we've learned from senior center, Old Firehouse, and our focus on sustainable design and, you know, higher quality of materials. When, as we go forward, do you see changes to our checking in on the health of those buildings as opposed to what we've done historically? You know, every 10 years, we hire someone to go look at them. Will we have a better sense of how those buildings are doing, especially because they are relatively new in the approach, in the materials and in the design? And so I guess the question is, would we be more proactive in checking the health of those buildings? Do you see changes in that regard?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for the question. I would say, this is Quinn. I think what we are seeing, we already starting to see some benefits from the last five years. We're starting to see with the facilities condition assessment, and we did the second one, we saw some, the needle start to move. Our portfolio is getting much more healthier. We're able to, now that we're staffed a little bit better, we're able to start doing more preventative maintenance instead of just reactive. So I think we're getting there. Councilmember Fields, I think we have a ways to go, but I think bringing this forth to council and having these discussions and having this in the forefront and this strategic plan is really going to help us with that. So we appreciate the support from council and the directors team, and each budget cycle, I see funding there in our small cap and in our capital. But I think this portfolio is much healthier than when I started 10 years ago, and I think we're going to continue to make it healthier with the support from this, from council.
I appreciate that. And I think anyone who has owned property or owned a house or owned a building knows that it's really a financial benefit to make something last as long as it possibly can. So I appreciate the looking forward and the proactive approach. Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, seeing no other questions, we will wrap up here. So it sounds like next steps is the public hearing on October 8th. Is that right? And then we'll be looking for final adoption by end of 2025. And as a reminder, this is going to provide us with the bigger roadmap, but the actual prioritization in the shorter term will be in our CIP process. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So we'll start going through the Planning Commission process so that we can get this ready for adoption by the end of the year. I hear that there is desire to look a little bit more closely at the financials, and so I've just checked with Director Cochran, and she'll be able to join us on October 28th for the next study session. We scheduled it if it was needed, and what I hear is that it would be appreciated to just spend some time looking at those financials. So if council thumbs up, then we can plan to come back on that date. We can bring up any updates that have happened in the Planning Commission process, but then we'll also ensure that finance is with us to help give that overview.
Are there any objections from the council to coming back with that?
That way we can get ready for adoption by the end of the year.
Wonderful.
Love it.
And we'll still have the, oh, the Planning Commission will do the other public.
The Planning Commission will do the public hearing, correct.
Great. Well, we'll look forward to getting there, updates, and then having that study session. Thanks so much. We'll wrap up this item, move on to the next item. Next item on our agenda is the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement. I'll let everybody switch out here. And we have our Director of Planning and Community Development, Carol Holland, who's going to introduce this item. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm actually going to hand the microphone over to David Lee, our Planning Manager for Land Use, and our Senior Planner, Alex Hunt, who is reviewing this project.
Good evening. Great to be here. Tonight, Alex Hunt, Senior Planner, will be guiding you through the Master Plan and Development Agreement for Redmond Town Center. Alex last briefed the council on this topic back on August 4th at the Committee of the Hold Meeting. The hope tonight is to answer any questions the council may have about the project and receive the council's green light for a potential hearing on October 21st. So without any further ado, Alex.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Alex Hunt. I'm a Senior Planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. As Dave and Carol mentioned, the item before us this evening is a Master Plan and Development Agreement for Redmond Town Center. Just as a note up top, this is a quasi-judicial decision, so this decision's governed by the appearance of fairness doctrine. Communications outside the scope of a council meeting must be disclosed and could result in council members' disqualification if objections to participation are raised. So I'll be briefing you on this Master Plan and Development Agreement that's slated to come back for a public hearing on October 21st. To get us oriented to the project site, we're looking at a roughly 19-acre site spread across four parcels down here in downtown Redmond in the town center zone, right across from the Light Rail Station. Development associated with this master plan would impact approximately nine acres of this larger site, and the entire site is located within the critical Aquifer Recharge Area 1 Zone. So this master plan is proposed to be developed in five phases. The five-phase master plan development would be the long-term development plan for this site to be developed over the next 10 to 15 years. This image here on the right depicts the phasing. We're looking at the site from the southwest here, so each number there corresponds to each individual phase. And the associated development agreement outlines the terms of that long-term master plan. It includes public benefits, which I'll go over in a little more detail. And then I'll also note that the master plan development, I'll also refer to it as the MPD, is a conceptual approval. So we will be seeing future land use entitlement for each phase. So all that to say, we're not really looking at the specific building design and specific site planning with this proposal. We're looking at more of the conceptual site planning, building massing, location and quantity of open spaces, land uses, things like that. So that's kind of the level, the scope that we're looking at. It's also worth noting that much of the existing Redmond Town Center commercial shopping area will remain. You can see the kind of cluster at the center where we see a lot of our existing commercial around the 74th Street pedestrian thoroughfare will not be impacted by this master plan. However, Phases 4 and 5 will impact existing commercial areas of Redmond Town Center, specifically those closer to 76th Street that wrap the outside of the existing parking garage. So at full buildout, at construction of all five phases of this master plan, anywhere in between 676 and 1,020 residential units would be developed, depending on the option that the applicant selects, and about 55,000 square feet of commercial retail area, of new commercial retail area are proposed. Now taking a closer look at the individual phases and what's proposed with each individual phase. Phase 1 is the vertical expansion of an existing parking garage. It really is intended to offset the loss of surface parking that we see with Phase 2. Phase 2 has two development options in the master plan package. The residential option for Phase 2 would consist of two 12-story mixed-use residential buildings with 504 residential units total. The residential and office option of Phase 2 would be one 12-story mixed-use residential building and one 12-story mixed-use office building. All options would include commercial uses on the ground floor. Phase 3 proposes demolition and redevelopment of the existing BJ's Restaurant site, and it would consist of a eight-story mixed-use residential building with 136 units. And then Phases 4 and 5 take us to the north end of the property, close to 76th Street. Phase 4 would be a seven-story mixed-use residential building with 148 units, and Phase 5 would be similar, another seven-story mixed-use residential building with 140 units. This proposal, this master plan, is taking advantage of the Exceptional Amenities for Additional Height Program that is outlined and established in the Redmond Zoning Code. This program, as the name suggests, offers incentives or additional height incentive for those exceptional amenities. So 12 stories is the maximum height that can be obtained through this program, and that is what the applicant is proposing. And the amenities proposed by the applicant are listed here. So affordable housing, a minimum of 20% of residential units, would be affordable to families making 60% of the area median income. There are provisions for local business support, which would dedicate certain amount of commercial space for small and local businesses. Startup business support would require smaller-sized commercial spaces to ostensibly have lower rents that would support startup businesses. And all buildings are proposed to be LEED Platinum or equivalent. So that's how the application is obtaining this 12-story proposed height. There are also a number of public benefits that are outlined within the development agreement. I'll run through those quickly here, summarize those. Ground-level public open space, there's a linear pedestrian plaza proposed that would link the existing commercial center with Bear Creek Parkway, so it would be a north-south spine to the site as a public open space for pedestrians. There would also be improvements to the existing pedestrian thoroughfare at northeast 74th Street. That's the east-west connection that runs through the existing commercial center. There would be street improvements for increased bike and pedestrian access. That would look like bike infrastructure and traffic calming, mid-block crossings along Bear Creek Parkway to connect that ground-level public open space with the Bear Creek Trail. Pedestrian crossing improvements adjacent to the Light Rail Station as well to improve connection between Light Rail and this development. Outside of just street improvements, there are other proposed improvements related to building design that would enhance pedestrian orientation, new overhead weather protection in excess of code requirements, pedestrian-scale lighting, and additional furnished seating and gathering areas within open space. The application for the master plan also proposes avoidance of aquifer impacts, so subterranean parking will be avoided, as there's no subterranean parking proposed here. All structured parking will be above ground, so that really avoids a lot of groundwater impacts, given that this site is in the critical aquifer recharge area. So on the other side of that, there are flexibility requests stipulated in the development agreement as well. Some of those requests are for phasing and vesting, which are pretty standard requests as part of a development agreement. So phasing over the 10-year standard development agreement term with potential five-year extension as well as vesting to 2025 land use controls. So vesting, meaning that over this 10-year or 15-year term, the applicant gets to be tied to existing land use controls so that they have predictability over the life of the development here. They have also negotiated pedestrian-generating use, square footage below the current existing pedestrian-generating use, and I'll give some context there. The Redmond Zoning Code stipulates that a net loss of pedestrian-generating uses within this site can only be allowed subject to a negotiation through a development agreement. This is what the developer and applicant are requesting. So pedestrian-generating uses refer to- So pedestrian-generating uses refer to specific types of commercial uses that can be expected to bring in foot traffic, bring in pedestrians to the site. So it would be retail, restaurants, recreational uses, those types of uses, and that's defined within the development agreement. The primary reason that this flexibility or this reduction is being requested by the applicant is to allow for future flexibility within the built-out center, to allow for vacancies to be filled more flexibly. So if a tenant moves out, that's a pedestrian-generating use, it wouldn't be kept vacant due to a PG or pedestrian-generating use requirement, another commercial use could move into that space. So that is what the applicant is requesting there, going from about 270,000 square feet of existing pedestrian-generating uses to about 170,000 square feet of proposed in the build-out state of the master plan. So recommendation and next steps. In July, we received a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Redmond Technical Committee, and on October 21st, we'll be returning for a public hearing as well as a potential decision if council chooses to do so. You can also expect to see a resolution for additional sewer connection charges that will be following this master plan and development agreement. That essentially lays out how sewer capacity will be brought into conformance, given plans and future development, and the cost sharing for those improvements. So with that, I would be happy to address any questions, or if there are any points of discussion on the issues matrix, I'd be happy to discuss those as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just for the listening public, since we don't do that many quasi-judicial items, I'll just say as a reminder, we'll have this opportunity in council discussions to talk about this, and there'll be the opportunity for the public to come share their thoughts with us at a public hearing in the future, but we won't be able to talk with you outside of this room about it in order to adhere to the Apparence of Fairness Doctrine. So just wanted to note that, that you can follow along here and then also come and talk to us about it. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Interested in getting that presentation if we could, because I didn't see it in our materials. And I was interested in the conversation around the pedestrian. So what is a non-PG use? What would a business that would potentially fill that need look like?
Yeah, the ones that we most commonly see would be kind of your more office uses, medical offices, dental offices, tax preparation services are a few common ones.
Okay. And they want to potentially reduce what is now currently around 260,000 square feet to 170,000 square feet?
That is their proposal, yes. So it wouldn't be dedicated space, it would be, you know, flexible commercial space like it exists in the current center, but over time you have, you know, commercial tenants cycling in and out of the center.
Right. Kind of like we've seen with some of the tenants, like I think there's now a fidelity or something in the space now, which used to be a jewelry.
Exactly.
Kind of thing, okay. That's good for us to know. And then the proposal as it stands would be us approving the full 15-year, their full 15-year plan, 10-15-year plan.
The base is 10 years, and then they can-
With an extension, potential extension. And the current request is even if in that five-year extension to still, and that puts us out to 2035, to potentially still adhere to 2025 code?
That's correct.
How many code updates do we think we will have between then, since we just finished our big 2050?
I would imagine we'll have minor ones. Carol, can you speak to long range?
Sure. We do have minor code changes. The next major code or comprehensive plan update would be in 10 years. Since we just did do a very large revamp, the code changes are probably going to be relatively modest. The things that it doesn't vest to is life safety requirements, and we do retain the ability in the development agreement to respond to public safety issues. So that is actually retained in city control, but it's mostly use issues, setback issues, height issues, things like that, so that they have predictability of design over time.
Okay, and they've already committed to LEED Platinum?
I'm sorry, committed to the what?
They've already committed to LEED Platinum for these, or equivalent to these.
That's a code requirement, and remember, we added that. You just saw the code requirements updated in 2024, or the end of 2023, and the outline for the exceptional amenities was included in that, and they are complying with those.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I found the conversation on the pedestrian-generating ratio interesting. I have a couple of follow-up questions. Is it fair to say that the reduction that they're asking for allows for flexibility, as you stated, in such that it doesn't necessarily mean at any one time it would be sitting at that lower 170,000, but it allows for that to fluctuate a bit better as the tenants turn over? Or are we headed toward a fixed pedestrian generating of 170,000 square feet?
The former would be a more accurate description.
Okay.
It would be fluctuating, and I believe the development agreement stipulates we need annual reporting on, hey, where are we at with that number? And just making sure we never hit that floor. In all likelihood, we'll be above that number.
Yeah, that makes a ton of sense to me, especially including the amount of literal housing that we are talking about adding to the space. So, okay, thank you. My last lingering question, I just didn't see it listed in the matrix, and one of my colleagues asked about it last time. There'd been a great deal of interest in the open space around the site. Can you just state quickly how the open space around the site will be impacted by this development agreement?
Is there specific open space? Are you referring to Bear Creek specifically, or is there other open space that we are looking at?
Yeah, I think Director Holland, you're familiar with the concern that we had around, from the public around the open space.
Right, so I think you're thinking about the larger acreage that was set aside as open space that will not be impacted by this.
Thank you. I just, I know we have listening public who would love to hear the answer to that. Wonderful. So for my part, I believe this is absolutely ready to go for a public hearing. For the listening public, you might see a short conversation here, but just know this conversation has been going on for years now, and the world has, the economy has moved on, the world has changed a lot. We did set the bar really high when we allowed this to be docketed, and that includes, you know, at the time, thinking about a lower level of inclusionary zoning that at the time was otherwise required anywhere else in the city, as well as the deep conversation we had on sustainability. I found the conversation also on the pedestrianizing and the access to Bear Creek. I have heard in community interest to greater connectivity through the center into Bear Creek. So I do believe we set the bar high, and I do believe that that bar has been met, and this item is ready for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I was actually thinking back to when we had been discussing some of the changes around zoning for this area, and specifically around what could be proposed and some of the requirements we had, and I think I remember Councilmember Stewart saying, we may not find someone who could make it pencil out, but I'd love to see someone try, because this is pretty exciting, and we do see a lot of really cool public benefits that would be proposed here. So it is really interesting to be able to see. I wanted to double down on the question around, just one more question around the PG use space. So specifically, is the spaces that you were talking about that would not fall into PG use in those areas, those wouldn't be used for housing, right? It would just be for other types of commercial and small business?
Commercial.
And they probably would be constrained to kind of smaller business endeavors, or I mean, potentially it could be a larger national chain, but using smaller business spaces due to the constraints of the sizes of those spaces?
Yeah. Anything that would be, you know, otherwise permitted in our land use standards would be allowed, but we do have pretty stringent requirements on orienting commercial to the pedestrian-oriented areas. So if it's not a pedestrian-generating use, it can be anything that would be allowed under, as a commercial use in the zoning code. So there's a lot more flexibility. We wouldn't really know what type of businesses we would see, but there are those exceptional amenities for additional height that stipulate a certain amount of area for small businesses, certain types of smaller spaces suited for startup businesses.
That's great. And then one question around the open space, I see it noted, even though it's not one of the numbered areas, right in the center that shows up, I think, as green, kind of with the circle and the main kind of town center area, that there would, it is noted about the new or in ground-level modified public open space. Can you speak more to the proposed plan in that area, or what, those are just like additional improvements to that area?
Correct, yeah.
And major development?
The proposal is fairly high-level at this point, since we don't have specific, you know, engineered design, and we won't have those until site plan entitlement phase. And I'm going to pull up the development agreement for my own benefit, so that I can give you the accurate language. But I believe it's primarily adding design and amenities that make it more friendly to the pedestrian.
Would they?
Sorry.
Apologies. So, yeah, I guess what I would be interested in is what is the extent to which those areas could be modified without kind of coming back and seeking approval? And what is it that we would be giving approval for in that particular area? Since I think that's the part I get a lot of questions about, I mean, not on this issue, but in general, that the community talks about. I mean, I don't believe it's really in the scope of this from my read, but I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, so the scope that council would be approving is a plaza incorporating alternative paving, additional landscaping, street furniture, and lighting for approximately, creating and maintaining 71,731 square feet of dedicated additional open space and pedestrian space. In addition, pedestrian, or sorry, tabletop intersections across 164th and 166th. And that would be kind of the extent of what are we looking at here? So anything in the future with a site plan entitlement, we're looking at, does it meet the letter of the development agreement? Are they providing the things that they said they were going to provide? But in terms of specific design, we're not at that scope yet.
Agreed.
And that'll be an administrative approval with a site plan entitlement that the technical committee would approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
One more question on the PG space. Do we know how that number was determined? Because that's like, that's 100,000 square foot loss. Do we know how that was determined?
There was a lot of negotiation between staff and the applicant, and this was the compromised number that allowed for us to have a significant amount of area where the applicant felt that they could do business moving forward and maintaining tenants without too much vacancy. So that's kind of the short answer there, but it was a lot of conversation.
Okay. And then is there any provision around, I know, for example, we have a space in a newer building that is currently being rented but has not been outfitted? Is there any provision in here about spaces that are looking vacant but are not?
We don't have any provisions for that type of thing in the-
And that's just in our city code? We don't have anything, correct?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks again. On the pedestrian-generating, the question that my colleague just asked, I, over the years of living in Redmond, have heard from community that one of the complaints of the space has been how often and how frequently residents find vacancies in the site. And so I'm finding some relief in the ability for them to have a bit more flexibility, because I actually would hope that residents will see a little bit more vibrancy in the space.
I think we can all expect that the owners of the mall are going to want to see those spaces occupied, and that the reinvestment in the mall is the thing that they have indicated is going to be the driver to ensuring that the area stays vibrant and occupied at the highest rate possible. So I think as you get more residents into that space, you'll get higher demand for restaurants and spaces that people go to to serve residents that are in the area, and so that will be an improvement over time that you, but the flexibility is needed in this interim time where construction is going on and the uses need to stabilize. The other thing is that Alex mentioned earlier, is that when areas are not necessarily occupied with what something that is considered pedestrian-generating, the design standards have been clarified to insist that the spaces are interesting and interactive. So even if we do get a space like a fidelity space, for instance, it has windows that you can see through, that there are activities that you can see inside. So it's not just a blank wall surface that you're experiencing if you're walking along those frontages.
Not seeing any other questions here. Anything else from the council? Okay, so can you remind us about next steps on this?
Yeah, we'll be returning on October 21st for a public hearing.
Wonderful. All right, well, we'll see you for that public hearing if there's no other questions, and thank you so much for your presentation tonight and answering these initial questions.
And we will get the presentation out to council via email, but we'll also make that available on the website as well, so that it's uniformly available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is council talk time. I have just a few little reminders for us for discussion. First is a reminder to the listening public that this Thursday at Estera Park at 5:00 PM, we're going to have our council conversation series, the first time in Estera Park. There's going to be free ice cream there at the really cool pizza kitchen in the middle of the park, so come and join us for conversation. We're doing kind of our rotating tables style, where you can talk with a lot of different council members and have 20-minute conversations in groups with your fellow residents. So we'll look forward to seeing our public out there for discussion. Come bring your questions and things that you're excited about to talk about in Redmond. I think we're also going to have some community-based organizations potentially joining us as well, so look forward to that. Just a couple things, actually, one other thing that I will also share with for the public, that Councilmember Stewart and I got to join with Metro on Friday, and just wanted to share that officially, Metro Flex is operating in the Overlake neighborhood, so you can download the Metro Flex app now, and you can call a car, and you just pay the price of a bus pass to be able to go in the service area from one custom point to another. So, and we'll be onboarding more of our city's complimentary circulator in other neighborhoods soon enough, but that's, I think, going to be really exciting, and they're using all electric or hybrid vehicles for this pilot, and we get to check out some of those. So that was just really exciting. We'll probably talk about that also as part of OnBUD's report, but I did want to announce it, because I couldn't wait any longer, and just to tell the council that we should all download it on our phones and start checking it out. And we did request of Metro that they come to one of our business meetings and be able to present about it. So that was really exciting, and we joined also with the mayor of Bellevue, who was celebrating that, because it's right on the Bellevue-Redmond border. Two things that I wanted to bring up with the council from council leadership, one is, or actually, both are kind of around council calendaring, and just wanted to make sure that we had everyone's approval to go ahead on this. We recognize that we'll have council leadership elections next year, but we did want to make it easy for whoever is in those seats for the future, and we're planning out so we could get just some dates on the calendar for council conversations, so that way it is something that we can regularly rely on going forward, as well as just being able to get some potential dates on for next year's council retreat. So we were just going to do that as council leadership to help to get some dates penciled in based on things we know about the council's schedule. But we did want to check in with the council to make sure everyone is good with that. Also, if we do begin to do some feelers out for facilitator, we're going to see if- Also, if we do begin to do some feelers out for facilitator, we were going to see if the facilitator we had two years ago, Tracy, is still available, as I think we had really positive feedback on her from the council, and if not, be able to kind of look, just to be able to make it so that whoever ends up in those seats in the future would be a little easier for them to start with a couple of the infrastructure things put in, but we didn't want to overstep on that. So just wanted to check in and get thumbs up if that's all right for us to help with doing some of the planning. All right, I'm not seeing any thumbs down, so we'll move forward on that. So those were just a couple items for us from council leadership. So I'll open it up. Are there items from the council? Any items for discussion or Ombuds items that have been coming up? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just wanted to note that parking for Astera Park is challenging, so if you're coming out to talk with us for council conversations on Thursday night, I encourage you to take the light rail and walk over. That's exactly what I will be doing, so maybe I'll see you on the light rail. And I wanted to share with my council colleagues that the marching band is going to be debuting their new uniforms at Homecoming on October 3rd, and I know a lot of us were involved in helping fundraise and going to events and fundraisers, so if you want to come out and see the new uniforms, they will be debuting on October 3rd.
Great. Can you send that around, or have Deidra send that around to the council? That would be great. I actually will also note one thing, one last thing that council leadership has been in discussion, as you all may know, we talk with our legislative coordinator every other week to check in on the work supporting the council. And one thing we talked about, what was the best way to do calendaring for our city events? We did, we do have in the shared drive a calendar where council members can indicate what they're interested in, but realized that not everyone was accessing that. So we're going to try a new thing in which we'll get every week, every other week after we meet with our legislative coordinator, she'll send an email to the council with upcoming council events and then upcoming community events, just so everybody can be aware. And we can continue to do the process where we'll have, you know, the, you can check the list, but, and you can send her any events you're getting from community, so others are aware. But between that and then getting calendar events, those will be kind of more proactive, and then we'll use the RSVP via the Outlook calendar events, especially to be able to track who's going. So just wanted to note that as a process we're going to try going forward. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Really glad that we're doing the council conversations on Thursday. I've asked a few times, and I do hope that residents of Astera Park and Overlake Village have in some way been directly invited. There's only basically one developer in the area, so I do hope, and maybe council leadership could confirm, but we do have, the city has relationships with those property managers, so I hope that folks were invited directly. Couple other things, on Saturday, I visited the, our second gun buyback program, and we can talk more about it later when we have a final count. Overall, I will say, the sold-out 100 items turned in of the spring was not the story of Saturday, much slower traffic and the like. I did meet with a couple who had several items to turn in who couldn't make it in time before the last one sold out and closed early, so it was great that they were able to turn in their items and do so. Some folks walked away with enough gift cards to do some wonderful holiday shopping for their grandchildren, and this time I appreciate that the police department also advertised that Redmond Ridge residents were eligible to calm down, and I did speak with at least one Redmond Ridge resident who participated in the event. So just overall, want to say one more time, like, huge thank you to the department for their partnership and their support. Truly, everyone who was there was very supportive of the event. One last thing, I should have mentioned this last week in my committee reports, but I believe tomorrow, the Sound Cities Association is kicking off the work for the new 2026 regional boards and committees. So this has been a big conversation with those of us who chair caucuses, so I'm sure everyone needs a moment to think about it. I've been thinking about it a bunch, so wanted to let the council know. I will be reapplying to GMPC, the Growth Management Planning Council at King County, but I will be departing from the Growth Management Planning Board at PSRC next year. Council Vice President Forsyth has also served on that board in the past, but definitely, I hope at a future talk time, we can kind of make sure that the team knows what our coverage needs to be and can be for next year. Thanks.
Mayor Bernie?
Well, that brought up two things then, to follow on that conversation with Councilmember Stewart. I have been serving on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority for quite some times, since its inception, and I will be rolling off of that, so that will be an opportunity, as well as the Regional Policy Committee, which I've also been on for a very long period of time. And so those will not be, I will not be in those two seats. So just throw that out there as an option, two great opportunities for those that could be interested. Both a good amount of work, but really make great regional impacts. But the reason I really wanted to speak is that we don't have a council meeting next week, because it's the fifth Tuesday, but on Saturday, October 4th, we are doing a food drive for our community at the Bella Bottega QFC. We used to do this prior to COVID, and has been in a bit of hiatus, but I always find it a really exciting opportunity to, you know, have our community help out. HelpLink will be receiving our donations, but also just an opportunity to get to know our community. We'll have boards and commissioners there, council members will be there, some staff will be there to help out, but I hope that the community shows up in support of the great need that we have in our community. I know we have a really generous, we have a really generous city, and I hope those that can give will. See everyone out there on October 4th, and we hope that we didn't conflict with any kind of major festivities, but see people out there.
Well, thank you. And, yeah, and I will also note that this Saturday, in case council members want to join in, we are going to be doing our Redmond Tree giveaway as well, and council members can come and help to hand out those trees. I know it got totally sold out pretty fast, so definitely a lot of residents who are excited about that as well. And I'm not seeing other council members. I will, on the note of celebration, I do want to wish all of our Jewish residents a very Happy New Year, le shanatovah. Anyone else have any other comments? All right, well, if there's nothing else for good of the order, that brings us to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.